Everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the exit, which is to your left of the room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order as they appear on the agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify themselves, give their address, and then present the case. The planning board members will have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time, anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to the public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at that point. And with that, Michelle, will you please call the first case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on our agenda tonight is case number PB 1811-1. Upon the matter of request by Carl Zizo for revised site plan approval associated with a change of use to convert the existing building into a private office with site-related improvements on premises 203 Empire Boulevard and in R6 Residential District.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carl Zizo. I reside at 603 Brookstone Bend in Webster, 14580. I'm currently the owner of Dynamark Electric. I've been the owner since 1999, and I'm looking to relocate our office to the property located at 203 Empire Boulevard. I'm here to propose a change of use from the current use, which is single-family residence, to a private office. The property currently has a zoning of R6, which I believe permits my intended use. In addition to the change of use, I'd like to propose the demolition of the existing one-car garage and construct a new two-car garage with the dimensions of 30 by 30, which I do also believe falls within the guidelines and no variance is required for that. As I said before, we are a private electrical contracting office. We currently have three employees in the office, one of them being myself, and our hours are eight to five. Usually, we're not there quite from eight to five. It's usually more like nine to four. And that being said, I'd like to start, with your approval, I'd like to start construction on the garage in spring of 2019.
Okay, thank you. We reviewed this at the workshop. Does any of the planning board members have any other questions? Validations? Alan?
Thank you. The construction of the garage, is that going to be a tear-down of the existing garage and then a build of a new garage?
Correct.
And how far back is that going to the property line?
I believe it's-
On the east side of the property line, sorry.
Looks like it's 25 feet. I apologize. 12.88 feet.
From the property line to the back of the garage?
Correct.
And are you going to leave the shrubbery that's already there? That divides that property between-
That shrubbery will stay. I have no intention on removing any of that.
So there'll be shrubbery on the east side?
On the east side of the property, yes.
That will not be touched, all right. Because that's pretty residential there. I mean, it's, you've got the hospital-
The animal hospital's what we back up to.
But if I head south, that goes right into a residential neighborhood.
Correct.
I mean, your neighbors are your neighbors. I mean, they're folks that live there, all right. And remind me once again, or just say for the record, your vehicles, commercial vehicles are not going to be stored there at any point?
Correct.
All right. That was it, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And just for the record, you also said there will be no signage, correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question. Is there any lighting proposed on this?
Coach lights, sconce lights on either side of the garage.
So, I mean, residential style to go with the-
The code required residential-style lighting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Huber?
We had talked briefly about landscaping in the front. I didn't know if anything had happened with that since we last talked.
Landscaping is existing to remain.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, if you take a seat, open up the public hearing. Open up the public hearing if there's anyone who would like to address the board on this matter. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Anybody like to make a motion?
Question. Is it, should we add, I believe they're called findings, so this decision about no commercial vehicles, landscaping to remain, and no signage? Or is that not necessary?
Oh, defer to counsel.
It's already in the, those are code compliance issues, so if signage were to be installed, he'd be out of conformance without the proper zoning board approval prior to. So I don't think you, from a, those are code enforcement issues.
I agree, yeah.
And the no commercial vehicles as well?
As well, correct.
With that, would you like to make the motion? If this is a seeker?
Yes.
And I should have asked, Carrie, is there anything special you want to call out on the seeker?
As you'll see in the Part 2 and Part 3 draft that was prepared for the board, this is a fairly straightforward, it's just a change of occupancy, and there's nothing associated with the new use that rises to, raises any concerns environmentally, either community character, physical change. Essentially, it's going to look and feel like a house from, for all intents and purposes.
I can't hear what he's saying.
I was asking a question because I wasn't clear about it, but I don't see anything wrong, and I'm certain it's going to happen, that some of his trucks will pull into that driveway in the course of a day, take materials out or get directions for the second job of the day, and I don't think that's any kind of a conflict.
No, and they're not lettered either, so they're not-
No.
Yeah, so though, by virtue of the kind of vehicles that the applicant has indicated, they would not be subject to the restrictions for the commercial vehicle in that district, so it wouldn't be an issue for their day-to-day operation. If the, there was any long-term storage of a larger vehicle or something were to change, that he may need zoning board approval to be allowed to do that in the future.
I'm saying, even if his own trucks did put some lettering on it and came into that driveway during the day, reported, and pulled out and went to a job, there's no conflict.
Correct, that wouldn't be an issue, that wouldn't be subcode violation, similar to somebody who had some work being done at their house for temporary parking, is allowed for those kinds of things. It's the, when the, when the truck is owned by the occupant of the home, that's when it's, you know, so if it's somebody else's vehicle and it's there temporarily, that would not be a violation of our code as it stands. You're welcome.
Is there any other clarifications needed before we move forward?
Now, if he, this is a staff question. If he were to sell this property, can he, the next person, go ahead, put in the use and store vehicles outside?
I'm sorry, say that one more time, I apologize.
Can commercial vehicles be stored outside, at this, ever? Is there anything in the code that would prohibit it?
So in the art, in the art district, so you have to rise to the level of being, so you can have a van parked on your property, and that wouldn't be a violation of the town code? It's when the commercial, is a commercial vehicle and it exceeds certain dimensional requirements that it's deemed not allowed by code.
A commercial vehicle that did not meet those requirements could?
Correct, so, yes.
Right, but he's guaranteed, as I said, he won't, but we're not guaranteeing that the next person will.
Well, this is for site plan approval for this occupant, so if the, the, any new or future occupant of this structure would need to come back to the planning board for the approval by this board, if it were to be a new professional office or another contractor, they would-
For the same purpose?
Yeah, because this is the, associated with the use, the change in use. So in this zoning district, unless it was another electrical contractor-
That's what I'm saying.
And then if they didn't meet the, they needed to go above and beyond what was reconsidered by this board at this time, they'd be back before you or the zoning board, depending on what relief or approval they needed.
So if we did restrict the commercial vehicle, just in general, there, to mitigate anything for the neighbors, that would not be out of character since he's already guaranteed it? And if the next electrical contractor that moved in there, he would abide by the same condition?
I would defer to our deputy town attorney on that. I don't know, again, I think it becomes a code compliance issue, but-
The code already regulates commercial vehicles, so there's no, there's no need to put that in the zoning resolution, the site plan resolution. In fact, you can't change those-
No, I'm not asking to change that. What I'm saying is, if it's a commercial vehicle that doesn't rise to the standard that's already covered under the code, it can actually sit out there.
Yeah, then it wouldn't be a commercial vehicle by code.
Right, and then that's still code.
You'd have to very tightly define, I think, what you want that to be. I think that's tough, because that's no different than Mr. Home Repair Guy having a van with his letters on the side of it and living there and having it parked in his driveway. And we allow that.
Right, to the extent that commercial vehicles are already regulated in the code, I don't think this board has authority probably to change that. So I would, I would err on the side of caution in adding that as a, as a condition to the approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Huber?
Are we all set?
Thank you.
Upon the matter of request by Carl Zizo for revised site plan approval associated with the change of use to convert the existing building into a private office with site-related improvements on premises 203 Empire Boulevard and R6 Residential District, I move that we declare this a unlisted action with a negative declaration for seeker.
Do I have a second?
Yep.
I got, Alan got it there. All those in favor, please say, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion for the, for the motion?
Regarding PB 1811-1, upon the matter of request by Carl Zizo for revision site plan approval associated with the change of use to convert an existing building into a private office with the site-related improvements on premises 203 Empire Boulevard and in R6 Residential District, I move that this board approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Palermo? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for doing business in a round of applause.
You too, thanks.
Thank you, go ahead, Michelle.
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1811-2. Upon the matter of request by Marathon Engineering, acting as agent for Wegman Companies, for revised site plan approval associated with a change of use to convert the existing building into self-storage with site-related improvements on premises 2111 Hudson Avenue in a C Business District.
Good evening, everyone. Matt Tomlinson from Marathon Engineering. Corinne Nicholas from the Wegman Companies is here as well. As mentioned and as discussed at the workshop, we are proposing a reuse of formerly Wegman's Chase Pickin' and the Stepping Stones Building for self-storage, which is a permitted use. We're proposing to add landscape islands, new fencing and screening along the rear of the property at the west, or I'm sorry, yeah, west and south sides, enclosing the rear parking area and loading docks to provide screening for proposed dumpster area and also to secure that back area and provide a secure loading area for potential renters. And then in addition, we're also proposing to provide temporary screening by adding unconditioned storage areas along the existing fenced area and covered previous lumberyard. We are also proposing facade improvements. I do have additional copies of what was handed out at the workshop. If anyone needs additional copies of that showing the proposed colors and changes to that facade. We're also proposing to install several landscape islands along the frontage in the parking area to minimally increase green space as well as provide some additional landscape material at the front of that building. We do recognize that we will need to reappear before you for signage. Unfortunately, that was not completed and it's still being worked on, but in the interest of facilitating the significant amount of work that needs to be done on the interior of this building as the rehab.
I need a holiday for the intermission. I'm going to turn this to the audience first and then I'll turn to you when we're done. That is a lot delicate than this, I'm sorry.
No problem.
And that's pretty much it. So if the board has any questions on any of that that weren't covered during the workshop or that are in addition, we'd be happy to answer those.
I'm sorry, did you say you had new renderings of?
Just additional copies of what we had at the workshop. Those are the current.
Okay, do you want to put those up so the audience can see?
Are you going to keep the white fences showing in this? What you showed us?
You're going to need a microphone if you're going to talk, so, there's a microphone over there.
Anyone else, does anyone else not have the packet that we handed out at the, at the workshop? So, in that packet that I just handed that was at the workshop, we show minor revisions to the site plan, which is on the first page, and that really just shows what I'm going to flip to on the revised rendering. So if you go to the third page, it says proposed exterior view 1. That replaces that white vinyl fence that we were proposing to put on along the east face of that outdoor storage with the unconditioned storage containers that I mentioned earlier, and those are approximately 10 feet in height and will provide that screening to that space. And those will be painted to match the facade colors that we're proposing along the entire building. I'm sorry, one note, when I say entire building, that's the entire self-storage area. That does not include the 4,100 square foot bank that will be painted or upgraded when a tenant's identified for them.
I have a question for staff. It was discussed about the parking on this, whether we were going to declare this as retail or if we were going to switch this to be a warehouse. Has that determination been made?
From a parking standpoint, the other self-storage has been treated as warehouse for the purpose of calculation for required parking, which would mean that this proposed use meets its current, and it's current parking requirements. Correct.
Okay.
That would mean that it's over significantly, correct?
Well, it's existing parking, so it doesn't need to provide any more in order to accommodate that current use, but the, the parking that's shown at the rear wouldn't have to be counted as part of its parking allotment.
So-
And that came into question as to them renting that or not renting it?
In the future, now that would be subject, as we discussed at workshop, the way our code is currently written, the outdoor storage that wouldn't be enclosed in, under a roof would then be subject to zoning board consent. So, this board can contemplate the future and current proposed storage anticipated at the site. Zoning board might need to come into play in the, in the future if they just opted to use that outdoor portion to store, for storage purposes.
And as mentioned, we are proposing a six-foot vinyl fence as replacement for the existing fencing that's out there in an effort to clean up that fence and provide screening for the rear of the building.
Can I talk to you about that fence for a second? There's all kinds of things going on with that fence back there at the moment. On the parking lot that blocks the view from that residential apartment building into the employee, what would, I'm assuming is employee for the Wegman's facility, that's like a 12-foot fence over there, right?
If I can just turn this around and point to where you're talking, just so I understand.
And, excuse me, Matt, I'm going to ask you to grab the portable mic. This way we, our folks viewing at home-
Not that one.
And then the audience can hear you.
And what I'm discussing with you doesn't have anything to do with what you're proposing. This would be the stuff that would be to the west and past your property line, going down that drive. Yeah, that's one fence, set of fence, and then as I go around the corner, what is going to be your property line is two different fences going on there. And then when I go to the south side of your property line, there's an even another fence going on there. Is there going to be uniformity throughout the whole complex? Or are we still going to be dealing with three or four different styles of fencing?
So we'll still be dealing with three or four different styles. The portion that we are replacing currently varies from six to 10 or 12 feet along there and is bored on basically metal posts. So the portion that we are replacing will then be consistent with the building. The chain-link fence that provides separation from the parking area to the south to this property will remain from our replacement at the rear of the building. All the way out to the front, we're not proposing to change that at all. And of course, the piece that goes along Wegman's property is off our property. We don't have any control over that.
So when you're telling me it's, what is the, the east side of your property line going to look like?
That'll be solid vinyl fence.
Okay, so we're getting rid of all the wood?
All the wood's gone.
And how tall is that going to be?
We're proposing six feet tall.
So there's no anticipation of being taller for RVs or anything else back there?
There is not currently, and we're currently not proposing that either.
No, I understand that, but for the future.
Correct.
I'm saying this so it's on the record if zoning sees us, that I think that that may be an issue. That's going to be a six-foot fence, and if you're going to put a 12-foot vehicle back there for storage, that's going to be an issue for the folks that live back there. That's all I'm doing at the moment.
Can I just piggy, I want to ask a question about the fence too, if I can. So from the northwest corner where that fence turns and kind of goes east-west there, what happens from that corner to the further northwest corner of the property? Is there any fence proposed?
So for right now, we're not proposing any. Right now, that corner is used as a pedestrian cut-through. We're just proposing to leave that a little bit more open than it currently is. Right now, it's about a 18-inch or a 24-inch wide gap in the fencing over there.
That still leaves a significant portion of fence that's unaccounted for. I mean, the pedestrian access is two feet wider, so-
That's got to be like 60 feet or something.
Yeah, we would be removing that fence, so there would not be fencing there.
So there's no blackage there at all?
If there was a preference, we can extend the fence. It just did not seem to be serving a purpose with no longer having construction vehicle, or I'm sorry, larger vehicles coming in and out to restock the lumberyard, which I believe was the purpose for it originally.
No, but you will have potentially larger vehicles coming in and out of that covered storage area.
Yeah, on a very infrequent basis. But if that was something that the planning board requested, we would be more than happy to extend it back to the existing limits. It was just our thought.
You probably will have moving vehicles, right? If somebody moves and wants to store their household furniture, it's going to come in at some sort of a van of some sort that will be bigger than a 12-foot van.
So typically, if there is a larger vehicle that's coming in through the screened-in portion coming back to the loading dock that we are keeping-
Excuse me, Matt, at the risk of being the microphone Nazi, I'm going to ask you to use it one more time.
Thanks. So, within this area is the loading dock. The dumpster is going to be placed back in one of the loading docks, and the loading dock will be maintained at the rear of the building for those larger vehicles. Otherwise, this will not be utilized. The, the covered storage area will not be utilized for people accessing and moving in. Large vehicles will go to the loading dock. Everyone else is coming in through that main entrance at the front of the building.
That part I get, okay.
And from a screening perspective, height of the fence, that'll be an operations thing. RVs would then probably get moved in here with the lower vehicles outside to be screened, or we'd have to come back in for a higher fence. And I believe if we go over six feet, we would need a variance for the height of the fence, which we do not want to pursue at this point. But understand that if we have to go back to the zoning board, that's something that would have to be contemplated as well.
Do we know why there's a 10-foot fence back there at the moment?
I was just going to ask that question. Is it because of the air handling units on the back of the building?
I believe it's for, they did some outdoor storage of skids and such along the raised platform at the back, is the only thing I can think of, but I don't know the, the history behind that.
I just want to clarify for the board's knowledge, and I'll double-check the code. I'm 99% sure that the six-foot maximum requirement is set forth in our code for residential. Commercial is completely the discretion of this board, so if an applicant were to come in and ask for a taller fence on some portion of their site, they have, this board has the ability to grant that as part of the site plan review and approval, just for everybody, for the viewing audience and for those in, in the, in the building.
There are three loading docks in the back, and I'll just switch. Which one is going to be used for the dumpster and then which two are going to be active? Are you leaving one shut down and using one and one for a dumpster?
Two will be shut down, and that's where the dumpster will be, so-
There's one on the west side?
The loading dock furthest to the west will be the one that remains. The other two will be infilled and a dumpster placed there.
And the dumpster will be on the outside, right? That's what I thought of.
Correct, yep.
All right.
And that is recessed loading dock, so it's four foot below the floor of the building.
And I'm still having a little problem with all the parking lot that I would like to see some more of this parking lot dealt with, just so there was a better water filtration system going on in the front part. I would hope that we could probably, or look at doing a little bit more garden on the, what would be the south side of your entrance?
I, I agree, especially if we're classifying this as warehouse. We're way over the amount of parking that's required for this. And we, I've already been told that there's a, there is a, a water issue there, that there's a lot of excess water in that area. And I know that, you say that it's expensive for you to convert pavement to grass. I understand that, but it's also expensive for the town to have to deal with runoff from property when, especially when the parking lot is not really generating tax revenue for the town and is causing, you know, it's just pushing the buck onto some other people.
One, one thing for the board to keep in mind is that the code provides parking requirements, but it does not provide any parking limits. There's no, no maximum number of spaces. So, the board doesn't necessarily have authority to say that the applicant can't have more than X number of parking spaces as part of this review. So just keep that in mind. That's, that's what the code provides, is a required number of spaces, not a maximum number. And I, from the applicant's standpoint, putting in the landscape islands and attempting to dress up the front of the- And I, eh, from the applicant's standpoint, putting in the landscape islands and attempting to dress up the front of this building, recognizing that there. There is a large field of parking here, um, but there are economics that go into these, uh, rehabs that. Uh, we'd love to change more things, but there's only so much that, that can be done. If an additional tenant is identified in the south and the, and the economics warrant. Uh, doing that either in the existing, uh, forty-one hundred square foot old bank, or. Who knows, an out parcel comes in in the future, uh, you know, we'd be, we're gonna come back before this board with whatever that proposal is and. And try to do that much more, um, but for what we're doing right now. Uh, this is, this is what makes sense. And then from a gardening standpoint, from a landscaping standpoint, there's quite a bit of deferred maintenance on. Uh, the landscaping out here, older mature shrubs, trees that need to be trimmed and cleaned up. So that will be part of, uh, what goes on, and there'll be, uh, maintenance staff that can take care of that as well. So that will be something that's addressed in the overall rehab of this property.
Okay.
All set? Yeah, uh, do you intend to continue to operate those air handling units on the back of the building?
Uh, once we close on the property, all the systems are gonna be gone through, see what needs to be fixed, replaced. And that includes the lighting. We don't know if they turn on yet, um, so that's, that's. The intention is to leave it if it's usable. If not, it'll be replaced.
Okay, I'm just concerned about the neighbors in that, that apartment complex, cuz right now, again, they have a, what is it, ten foot high span? I know it does jump up there in the middle.
Jumps up, yeah.
And I don't know if that's, you know, it does extend quite a ways down the building to the, to the north. And I'm wondering if that was there to screen the neighbors at all from that noise?
I, I don't believe that it was, and if, if it was intended to screen from noise, it didn't do a very good job.
Didn't do a very good job, yeah.
The apartment building is set back so far, they see basically right over that fence regardless, so.
Okay, yeah, cuz I know it's on, it's on one of the lower roofs, which was my, why I was thinking that, so. Okay, I just, I don't, I don't want those people being kept up at night, you know.
Sure.
With an A, and, with, with some awful mechanical sound, so that's my concern.
Any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
That's it, no.
Anybody else have questions?
I wanted to go back to Mary's comment about the fencing in the front, um. The first proposal you had had the vinyl fencing, and the second one you had, had, uh, the, keeping the, the metal fence. Um. I don't know how other people on the board feel about that. I think that the vinyl fence would be better because it's completely opaque. And if garbage or plastic shopping bags or whatever were to blow around and get caught between the rear of the. Storage containers and the fence, stuff wouldn't get caught in there. If it did, you wouldn't see it, um. And it, the vinyl fence seems like a better option to conceal what's going on behind. Is there any thought that you had on why the metal fence would be better than the vinyl fence?
Uh, eh, from a, uh, from the opaque comment, the. Storage pods behind that would provide that, um, there will be onsite staff here during normal business hours. They'll be responsible for cleaning stuff up. They'll have onsite maintenance, so, um.
The cubes are gonna be.
This will not be an untended site, if you will. Um, I understand the concern, so I guess the thought was if we're going to screen it. With a solid wall of these behind it, why put another fence inside? That creates a couple of layers that. Become an issue as well, so that was a thought.
These, um, um, storage containers are gonna be red, right? Are they gonna be skinned with any sort of advertising or marking, or are they just gonna be solid red?
Uh, solid red with the white walls, so the red are faux doors basically that go on them. And then the, the body of the container itself will match the facade of the building.
So there'll be fake doors on the back of the.
These come as pre-manufactured units essentially with color on four sides that you can customize, um, so that's the intention.
So, I'm sorry, explain to me what the, what is the back of these cubicles gonna look like? When we're looking at the, it's gonna have faux doors on the back?
Correct.
For what reason?
I think just to keep it from having a solid color across the whole thing. Again, if that's the preference, I don't think there's any, there's no markings or anything else. It's just matching the colors of the pillars and the other columns. Along the, uh, along the facade itself.
I, I'll say that it took me a long time, I, I know, I know what your concern is, I think, um. Perhaps, and it took me a long time sitting in the, uh, in that Home Depot, the exit from Home Depot on East Ridge Road. To realize that some of those doors in the U-Haul across the street are actually not really doors. I like had to stare at them for a while, so they're, they're, they're pretty good.
I think it just serves as an advertisement. It's like a coy way to advertise without blatantly advertising.
I don't get that.
Like, it's because it's a, it's a, it's a self-storage facility. So if you make it evident to passerby that this is a place to store your stuff, even though those doors are fake. It still serves as a kind of signage or advertisement without it really going. Under the code, you know, as signage or advertising, so, I mean, personally, I don't like it. I think if they're trying to subvert, go around by doing that.
I think, I don't think it's any worse than having it just outside. Having doors on it.
Yeah, so what would be the difference if there was a ten foot aisle way in front of it and they were real doors?
Pardon?
What if there was a ten foot aisle way in front of it and they were real doors? Why would that be any different?
I think it's a coloration thing here that we're going for is, it's a red and white, right? Or red and gray. It's their. Company logo, it's right there on the box, not only on the building, it's being spread all over. That's why I think it's advertising. What would be the difference if they were real doors? We wouldn't probably approve it.
Based on what?
I don't know. I haven't gotten there, cuz it's just a theoretical.
Well, I, I, it might be difficult to draw the line then, cuz we've got red on the columns and red on the top.
I get that.
I don't know. I, I don't have any major issue with it myself.
I don't either, so I'm not following it. How does the rest of the board feel?
We've also got landscaped islands that they're proposing in front of it. It's gonna kinda block some of you from the street anyway, so I don't, I don't have a major issue with it.
I think I'd prefer to have the, the, the red faux doors than, than just a big white wall. Personally, I know, I know, I know, I understand why you construed as advertising, but I don't think it's a bad, I don't think it's, it's not like they're gonna paint a big sign across it.
I think it's clever advertising. If it, I mean, if we're gonna look at it and that's what it reads to us, God bless them.
Now that Bradley said that, I'm gonna probably look at it then.
It's no different than clever advertising on other buildings. I mean, we've got a fitness gym in town. That has some rather large, what I would consider signs, I think in a much more clear sense of the definition. That aren't signs cuz they're murals, right? So how's that? I don't have a problem with it. I don't see an issue with the doors personally.
And just for frame of reference, these are about ten, ten feet high. Um, this perspective is from within the parking area. Inside two layers of, you know, if you're driving down the drive aisle to get to the signal light, there's two layers of landscape islands. And it's gonna be three hundred fifty feet away, uh, from where you're driving. If you're coming in here to park to actually see these doors, you're coming here to store, get your stuff. So I, I don't know that it's something that's right in your face out at the street that we're talking about.
It is quite an expanse. I mean, it's an entire former white lumberyard.
It's a large building, yeah.
So, even if you say it's only this much of it, it's.
The rendering is suffering from not having any of the landscaping shown though as well.
Part, uh.
Right, I mean, that rendering suffers from the.
Well, I mean, you could, you could say the, the same way too. I mean, this could be white, but if there were shrubs in front of it, it would completely soften the look.
Sure.
Or if it weren't bright white, it'd soften the look as well.
So.
I do have one more question about the fence. I, I need to go back to it one more time. In the back corner of the drawing that I have right here, that's C one. Um, you're showing that you're cutting out one of the corners that currently does have fencing in it. Are you fencing over the existing fence, or are you removing the fence?
So we were proposing just to remove it. It didn't seem to serve much of a purpose anymore. And that was where I offered that we would extend that back to the existing limits if that was something that the planning board.
I'm talking about the, the southwest corner of the property?
So, oh, I'm sorry, southwest corner of the property. Like the one on an angle?
Yeah.
This corner? In this area here.
Right now, you're using it for snow removal, or whoever is removing snow is using it for, yeah.
What I'm showing here is the limit of the existing fence, so it's essentially right in the existing location.
Okay.
There's a couple of trees in there.
Jocks over there? Cuz I don't recall that.
There, I think there's actually two layers of chain link fence in that area, um, so the intention is just put it right back where it came out of.
Does anybody else recall it was over there?
There's a limb about this big that's down in the parking lot, yeah.
That's not my problem, thank God. I already dealt with one of those, um. Mister Chair, I think I'm completed for the moment.
Mister.
I just have one quick comment, just for the matter of record. I believe during the workshop, you said there is no new lighting proposed. Unless a light fixture isn't working, it'll be.
That's correct, yep. Intended to leave the existing lights. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to address the board regarding this? Please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Ann Burns. I live at one ninety-nine Bellhurst Drive, and I'm here this evening. Representing the community group helping around to create a plan for progress, um. My comments that I submitted this morning were based on what was shown at the workshop and what was submitted on October nineteenth. Based on this conversation that has occurred, um, I, some questions have arisen. And I'm gonna defer to the board, um, I, I would like the neighbors to be the residential neighbors. To be protected in their view of the building, um, and especially if, um, RVs are going to be stored here. Um, we would ask that the fence be tall enough, and it sounds like that's within the purview of the board. So that that's not visible for the neighbors in the residential area. Um, we do appreciate, um, and support that, you know, this is an adaptive reuse. That's something we have promoted for, um, the twenty years we've all been together, um, reusing the building rather than demolition. Um, better for the environment. We appreciate that the lights are gonna be reused and that those will, um. Remain, um, but in terms of the landscaping and the fencing and all the issues that have been brought up. This evening, um, that are new from what we had, um, I would defer to the board. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the board? Where did our applicant go? Oh, would you like to address those comments? You were hiding on me there. Sure, sorry. Uh, just to be clear, we're not proposing currently any storage at the rear of the building. Uh, that fence is in poor shape. It doesn't provide a great, or do a great job of screening that back area currently. That's why we're proposing to replace it, and we fully acknowledge that we'd have to come back either before this board and or the zoning board. If we do propose that in the future, that means we'll have a good problem in that we filled up our outdoor storage space. And don't have, uh, anything else to rent interior to the building, so. Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing. You can have a seat. Any other comments before we move to a motion?
I think I am in favor of that fence in the back where, where it runs east west. Bringing it down to the corner of the building with the gate in and everything, and it'll gate this whole thing in.
I think that makes sense.
I mean, I know it's a pedestrian cut through. If you look on Google Earth, you can see where the.
I was just gonna say.
The grass is gone and people have walked through. That'll leave enough room for people to cut through. If that's, if, if, if that, if they're okay with that, that, that's fine, but.
So you repeat that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you just said to me.
Okay, yep, so on the backside of the building, the fence runs north-south along the property line, and then it turns and runs to the east, correct?
Yes.
I would like it if they brought that where it runs east-west there, where that sliding gate is. If they bring it farther north, right to the corner of the building.
Are you saying the corner of the.
Back of the bank?
Outdoor storage?
Corner of the, yeah, li- literally of the, of the, of the farthest, the northmost wall.
So you wanna move the sliding gate north?
I wanna move the whole shoot and match, move the sliding gate north and run the fence right up there.
I guess I was envisioning, which we'll talk about the fence height in a minute, but I was envisioning that fence just being extended.
Just extending the fence and not moving the gate?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, I'm, I'm comfortable with that too. I was just thinking, I, I.
Cuz that may cause them logistical issues as far as sliding gates and grass.
Sure.
And there's a stop sign right there.
Well, my thought was just, my thought was that it would enclose, I guess maybe on purpose they haven't enclosed that one strip. Of storage space.
My, my goal was to try to block the residential view and provide a level of safety, so the people weren't just walking through where there'd be traffic.
Sure.
Right, so if we can extend that fence pretty much down to the property line, at least to the end of the building, if not closer to the end of the property line.
Sure.
I think that would achieve the same general thing, probably save them a little money.
That's fine.
That's gonna actually be the uglier part of all of it. Right now, it's just a brick building, right?
Fine by me.
Does that work?
Yeah.
So you're saying to extend the fence.
The extend the.
Leave the gate where it is.
Yeah, leave the gate, extend the portion of the fence that runs north-south.
Three foot gap. At the end for pedestrian access.
I wanna understand what they're talking about first. I'm, I'm not following the.
So, so basically, Mister Chairman, what I've, I've kinda penciled it in here. Extending the fence, leaving the gate where it is.
Yep.
And extending the fence to the north, approximately to the property line or the edge of the property, or. Close to it, three feet for a walk-through or whatever they want.
Oh, okay. Do it one more time, Spencer.
Yep. So extending the north-south portion of the fence to the north property line. And leaving a three-foot pedestrian access or thereabouts.
In his, in his testimony, did the applicant say they were okay with?
I believe that's what was indicated, yeah.
Okay.
Now, the fence height, do we have confirmation? Can we increase?
So the applicant's indicating that there is no outdoor storage proposed at this time. Um, the, it is this board's discretion with respect to allowable height. Um, I would defer to, I don't know that if you can require.
Well, here's my, if, if this, if they decide at some point that they do wanna go back to the ZBA and ask for outdoor storage.
Correct.
Does it come back in front of this board?
If they, um, I would, I would, I would have them come back to this board because it changes the use of the site, the exterior. So that when the zoning board's contemplating the, the, its consent, it has, this planning board has got a decision to make as well. So this, eh, the outdoor use would likely come back for both. It would come to this board for the site revised site plan associated with that. And it would come, go to the zoning board, um, for the consent piece of it as per the code.
Why not just do it once and do it right?
Well, I agree.
Yeah.
Why can't we just approach that it's a ten foot fence now and we want like-for-like? That would be my reasoning, more so than whatever the use is. Because even the applicant said they didn't understand why it was ten feet in the first place, so why not just do like-for-like? That would be my question. I guess the legal, can we require a like-for-like replacement? Um, I'm looking at the code now, um, I'm not familiar with these provisions, uh, if you wanna give me a couple minutes to look through it, I can give you a better answer. Okay, you're on the clock. Sounds good. Take as much time as you need.
Do you wanna look at Seeker while we're waiting for that answer?
Well, do we need to have any more discussions about what?
Yeah, I wanna, I'm wondering what you're suggesting.
So go on to the, uh.
I'm wondering what height you're suggesting, ten feet?
I said like-for-like, so.
I mean, I, I think the chairman's comment makes very valid sense.
Yeah.
Like, like-for-like replacement of what's back there?
No, I'm.
Oh, like-for-like on height, sorry, thank you.
I don't even think like-for-like at this moment, because it's like-for-like would be sort of odd back there.
Six foot, six foot, six foot, ten foot, ten foot, ten foot, six foot. No, no, it, it's got a big, it comes up in the middle.
There's, that's why I said.
It looks like an outfield wall.
It's weird fencing going out back there. Um, I think eight or ten feet would probably serve the applicant a lot better in the long run.
I agree.
Um, for him to come to get that done and just do it once if he has to. For him to come, to get that done and just do it once. If he has to come back here and then we tell him he has to rip out a six-foot fence to put in an eight-foot fence, it's not gonna be.
Or you try to tack onto it, which never looks right.
Well, not onto a vinyl fence.
Talking about for a use that he's not, I'm just saying. He's not proposing that use though currently, so I was okay with like-for-like, but I don't know if we can impose. I defer.
Uh, the, the code's not entirely clear. It says that a six-foot fence is permitted. It doesn't say whether you can have, uh, whether you could allow or require a taller fence. Um, so, you know, I would, uh, I guess I would err on the side of caution then, um, and not, not require the applicant to do something that's not provided by the code.
So, um, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to invite the applicant back up even though we, we stopped. I'd just like to get their opinion as to the impact on the project if we required a.
Sure, uh, ten-foot in a vinyl is significantly more expensive than a six-foot, which is a standard height. Um, especially given that we're not proposing something. Uh, if the board saw fit to put a restriction like that on it, we would propose potentially leaving the fence until we knew we were gonna do something. Meaning the existing fence, which I don't think would be the preference, but, uh, just from a cost perspective, that's a significant add to the project to go to a ten-foot all, all the way around. And I, I don't think like-for-like with a ten-foot piece is gonna look, uh, attractive along the back there. So we'd respectfully request just a six-foot fence and then if we need to change it, we need to change it with some extenders and new panels, um, new post slips and, and panels. Um, I don't know that we anticipate that that's something that will be necessary if and when we get to that point. So, uh, we would rather only come once as well, um, but understanding just, uh, what we're asking for today, that would be our, our preference.
Do we know for sure that this fence is, what, because of the, the apartments there?
Uh, that's the way it's currently shown on the property survey that we had completed, yes.
Okay.
So I guess why do we think it was ten foot? Cause Chase Pickett had an extra piece left and put it in, or was it there for a reason?
No, no, it's not a single section of ten foot. It's probably twenty feet of ten foot. I mean, it's significant.
It's probably more than that, yeah.
Piece of, um, fencing there.
So you don't think it was just a, a.
It was no accident by any means. It was put there for a reason. Um, he could actually be right about the loading dock. I never got out of my car to measure it, but there is a dock back there that looks as if it would be a storage dock. So that may well have been. I don't think it was ever there to block the HVAC since that's still another fifteen feet high or something like that. Back, whatever the height of the building is, eighteen feet, twenty feet, um, so.
So to me, the safest is to require a like-for-like.
Well, or, or we allow the six-foot fence and the applicant understands that if he's coming back.
He's already said.
He's coming back to us.
I'm just saying, and it comes back in front of this board, I think it's kinda already been relatively stated that it's probably gonna have to be changed.
So if we say that it's.
They can't store anything outside today other than.
That's what I was just gonna ask. So if we say that it's a six-foot fence right now, the applicant is not allowed to put anything back there.
Park, just, I mean, employee parking, customer parking, whatever they want, but it's not rentable parking spaces.
But no storage.
You can't do that according to the use. You can't use it for storage.
Correct.
Yeah, so the application before you is not showing that you, being used as outdoor storage. If that were to be, um, deemed either necessary or desired, the applicant would need to come back before the board for revised site plan. And then from, uh, request, uh, consent through the zoning board.
So let me ask one more question. Where is the dumpster currently today?
Uh, I don't believe there's currently a dumpster on-site today.
So I'll tell you more of my concerns. Is that where the ten-foot fence is? Is that, that corner? No, no, it's where the lower.
No, 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 it's probably.
It's in one of the recessed loading docks. I'm looking at it on the aerial.
It's probably thirty or forty feet away from the fence, actually.
Oh, is it there currently?
Yeah, at least. Uh, it's probably more like eighty feet, but yeah, yeah, it's in, in the base of the loading dock.
So I didn't look at it from the apartment side.
There is a loading, there is a dumpster on your property at the moment, right?
No enclosure. Yeah, there is one in the loading dock area.
Yeah, okay.
And where, where is it?
In the loading dock area currently.
Well, no, there's one in the front prop, front piece of the property. It's in the parking lot. It's probably gonna be used for demolition.
Uh, it won't be there when we get working.
How tall is the dumpster? Over six feet?
No, it's a, it's probably the.
You want to talk about the one in the front?
Yeah, it's like twenty yards or forty yards.
That's a temporary, yeah.
I'm talking about the one that they would keep in the back. Isn't that dumpster over six feet tall?
I wouldn't imagine that they would need a big one.
Oh, a, a standard six-yard dumpster is six foot by five feet by six feet, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So it would be shielded by the six-foot fence.
Yep, it's in the recessed loading dock area, so it's lower than the starting.
Down, down four foot anyway.
I'm okay with it, okay.
Do we have to worry about that? A dumpster enclosure? Could this fence count as the dumpster enclosure?
This fence would not count as a dumpster enclosure.
I only ask that because we've been really, I mean, we have an application tonight that. We were very specific about having a dumpster enclosure for, so.
It will, it will be fully enclosed by the fence and fully screened by the fence. Uh, if additional enclosures required, requested, we can definitely provide it. Seemed, seemed redundant.
I mean, I think that sounds okay as long as it's gonna be lower than the fence. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Which, uh, it's also recessed and it's recessed, so I'm okay.
I just, I just wanted to put it out there because we've been very specific about dumpster enclosures and other parking lots in the town.
Well, the reality is it's actually not lower than the rest of the elevation. The parking lot's pretty flat back there and looks over toward the, um, apartment on the same elevation. Just about, I don't think that if there's any difference, it's not a significant difference.
It's about two feet, I believe, sloped down and there's trench drains in that loading dock area that collect all the water over there. So it is, it is lower than where the elevation that the fence is going to be.
I feel better now that I've asked those questions.
I think from a dumpster enclosure standpoint, I think, you know, we have some extenuating of circumstances in this installation here. Where I think we would have rationale to not have one if we so chose.
I think that's fine as long as we're, can back up why.
I understand what you're saying, cause we have been sticklers on that. I'm just saying, I think here, there are a number of. Different situations, especially compared to the one that you're referring to that we're gonna be looking at.
Just as long as we're intentional about it, that's all.
Very different. Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I think it's good.
You really couldn't see it if you wanted to.
Well, if there weren't, if, if they weren't putting a fence up there, you certainly could see it.
Oh, yeah, that would be a different story, yeah.
Yeah.
So as long as the applicant's still up here before we let him sit down, is there any other questions for the applicant?
I just have one question. What do you do with stuff that's not claimed or they don't pay the rent?
Go on, you go online and auction it off.
I think there's a TV program.
Yeah, right. Is it, are you gonna need a bigger dumpster? I mean, it's an operational question. I don't know if.
Uh, I would imagine that that is a, an extremely infrequent, uh.
It can happen though. I mean, there, somebody dies, their estate doesn't know it's existing and the rent doesn't get paid anymore and those stuff sits.
They, they get, they get auctioned.
Yeah, e- either it would be auctioned or a temporary larger dumpster would be brought in, similar to somebody ripping a roof off type thing and get rid of everything.
Got it.
Thank you.
I wanted to go back to your green space comments. Um, what are you proposing in terms of where you would add this space?
I would like, i- if there's no parking requirement here and as part of their site design, I think that it would be justified that we put a green space to the south of their entrance. Between there and the new building and just to the east of, right along the sidewalk that's there. You can see there's.
And the new building.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
So you wanna eliminate the parking spaces along in front of the building?
Ten parking spots right there that don't exist on the other side. Um, it would just add some uniformity there. I don't think we're eliminating parking that is any more convenient or less convenient.
Well, that parking could be used by either building, right?
Yeah, I think you're actually eliminating the most convenient parking for the building.
Yes, I was gonna say, especially if that build over requires people.
Yep, and as I've always said, I know how to count to four any quicker than anybody else, so.
What about, um, what about?
I'm more than happy to move along.
What about doubling the size of some of the islands? The ones that are proposed in the front and maybe the ones that are existing in the rear.
They're not, are they increasing, they're not increasing the ones in the front?
Uh, there aren't any in the front. They're, they're putting them in there.
And you're asking to take away parking spots to?
In front of the building or, I'm sorry.
Well, my thought is that they're already gonna dig that up, right? And they're already gonna curb it and they're already gonna do all of that. So I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm not an expert here, but I don't see it as.
That's the way it looks.
A huge cost to make them larger versus tear up a whole nother area of the parking lot. Especially when we know we have drainage problems there and we have more parking than we need.
Are the drainage problems not further to the east?
Well, it's my understanding that's the whole plaza, but this is certainly a component of the plaza.
So does the town have record of a drainage problem before we?
I would have to, I would have to check with, um, the Commissioner of Public Works to be able to comment on that. Um, this is on private property. The, this project in, in general doesn't rise to level, given that the bulk of the work is happening on the interior of the building. And the area that would be disturbed doesn't, uh, require a SWIP, um, a stormwater, um, pollution prevention plan. Um, I don't, this, it's not something we've, the, obviously the town engineer reviewed the plans as presented. Um, but didn't identify that there was any additional need that was called out from a, from a operational or site functionality standpoint. So I, I would, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a statement of what the need is or isn't, um, based on my. La- lack of information on that, speci- where the specific issues might exist if they do.
So based on that, I, I don't feel comfortable.
I just think that it's best to keep the rain where it goes. If it falls there, we should try to keep as much of it there as possible. We know that there is too much parking here and we're making a small modification to double the size of these islands rather than keep them there the way that they are.
I wouldn't have any.
I mean, and it's a small adjustment, uh, chipping away at a problem which is much bigger than that.
I don't know. I, I appreciate the reuse. I appreciate what they're doing, so I don't know if I wanna impact more, but I'll defer to the board. I'm not in favor of.
I, I have no problem leaving water where it's supposed to be left, which is not supposed to be on asphalt, so if we can get rid of a little asphalt. Um, if they're gonna, they're digging up anyway, right? So if they make it four feet as opposed to two feet, it's not costing them anything else.
Well, we keep saying that, but.
It is additional curbing.
Yeah.
That's, that's the only real cost, I believe.
I'm not comfortable that we didn't ask these questions when we had the applicant up here and now all of a sudden we're bringing it up.
As far as I'm concerned, it's not really a question. I mean, I, I think this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I personally am not in favor of doing that without getting input in from the applicant.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I.
If you'd like, if you need to call him up, I bet he's not gonna agree to do it.
If the rest of the board wants me to call him up, uh, I'm fine, but I, we didn't ask those questions before and I think we should have if we were gonna impose those kind of restrictions. I'm sorry. So, is it, anybody on the board feel that strong that, you know, does the majority of the board feel that we have to call him back up to have that conversation or?
Let me, why don't you? What's the hurt?
Back up?
He's getting his exercise in, getting your steps.
But let's make sure this time, if we have anything else that's coming up, that we get it out and get this clean, so we keep this process clean. Thank you.
Matt Talmerson from Marathon again, thanks. Uh, so from a, I, I fully understand the comment and where it's coming from. Uh, we do a lot with stormwater. We do a lot with reuse of plazas. Uh, the applicant really didn't have to propose any landscape islands for this reuse. And felt that they were putting their, uh, best foot forward in, in effort to demonstrate that they wanted to add green space and landscaping. So, um, i- if the board said, hey, we can't give you an approval without it, ah, that would really put us in a tough position. Um, a couple of extra feet of curbing of landscaping, you know, it, it's an incremental cost for sure, but there is definitely a cost associated with that. In addition, it would be reducing, uh, ten of the closest parking spaces to the front door, which is where they're most utilized. Um, so, uh, it, it would definitely be the applicant's strong preference not to increase that. Uh, as mentioned at the workshop, I believe, uh, there is potential because of the limited parking use that additional development could happen here. Uh, someday, some way, come in with a new tenant for the forty-one hundred, come in with some kind of an out parcel or, or reuse of this building if self-storage doesn't work. And we would hate to, um, limit ourselves by reducing additional pavement, uh, at this time. It kinda goes to the same conversation about the fence heights and, uh, since we're not proposing anything there currently, we prefer not to do the work and spend the money.
Well, isn't it the opposite? With the fence height in the back, you're not, you want to have the lower fence, right? Because you don't wanna spend the additional money because th- this is what it's proposed as now. And this is what it's proposed as now, right? With, without the need for this extra parking, so it's essentially the complete flip.
Uh, it, it is and it isn't. Uh, there's no code requirement to replace a fence. Again, that's a best foot forward to try to dress up that fence and that screening, uh, at a cost to the applicant where it may not be something that's required. Uh, by code other than normal maintenance and rehab. So, uh, from that standpoint, it's a, a property owner attempting to, uh, dress up their property and the reuse of the building.
Matt, just so we understand, when we're talking about the increase in the spaces, we're talking about the islands in, uh, C-one? That you guys are now creating against a light post?
Along the, along the.
Along.
Front parking of the building, yes.
Yeah, the, it.
No, not along the front parking.
Along the east.
Along the drive aisle.
Drive aisle. It would be just an expansion of those.
Correct.
Is what we were talking about. I, I've given up on the idea of the ten spaces in front.
That was my underst- understanding. Well, the, but to widen those, in order to maintain the fire line along the front of the building, we'd be losing the closest parking spaces on each of those islands as well. In order to make those larger.
Well, you already have ten parking spots on the south end of the building.
But you're, you're way over parking, so parking's not gonna win the day with me. What will win the day though is if I expand that by two feet, is that so economically impossible that it couldn't happen?
Uh, if we're talking about two feet, uh, wide, I'm sure we can find, but I, I mean, we're talking about a five-acre, six-acre parcel that's entirely paved. Um, a- and was approved for reuse by stepping stones without this being a requirement, so.
Parking requirements for stepping stones and the parking requirement for self-storage are two totally different things.
Well, I think that we are mixing the parking requirement or parking demand with a request for additional green space. So I think that there's some overlap in that comment there. Um, so if it's to generate green space and we need to pick up four hundred square feet of green space or whatever that number is to go two feet wider. I'm sure we can find that somewhere on-site where it doesn't require curbing, doesn't require a landscaping bed and could be restored as lawn. If that's something that the board's going to require, but again, I, I, I believe that the applicant feels that they have put their best foot forward as far as what they're required to do and what they're proposing. And respectfully request that the board consider it that way.
I think we got the message. Thank you. I think we have to take it as it was proposed and, and go from there.
Well. I'm not gonna argue that point with you at this moment, Bernie.
Okay. So based on that, any other comments or?
Well, I think that we still have an open dis- discussion on the fencing in the back on height. Are we just gonna do a six-foot or are we gonna?
I think it's as submitted six-foot and if they come back in at some point to change the height, they're gonna have to do a bunch of rework. Which is gonna cost them more money then, but that's.
So in the.
And nobody likes the like-for-like, so.
Or we limit the, uh, the height of storage at that point. You know, we have a couple of different ways we can look at it, so. I say it's as submitted six-foot. I'd rather have a new contiguous, brand-new fixed fence.
Right.
Than leave what's there.
I agree.
And we can't really, um, limit the height of storage, right? Because it's not allowed for storage.
Well, I'm saying not now. I'm saying when they come back.
Yeah, unless they raise the height of the fence.
If, if they come back.
If they come back to the zoning board for a variance, I think that they should come back for a height on the fence. And I'd like to put that into the, uh, motion when we do that.
Well, zoning board will also have to consider.
I don't, I don't think we.
Yeah, the authority said we, we have to air.
Variance for what?
Yeah.
If they ever wanna do outdoor parking in that back parking lot.
Yeah, yes. You know, I, I agree with that. I didn't understand that part.
But I'll, I believe we already got counsel not to air on putting anything like. But I'll, I believe we already got counsel not to err on putting anything like that into the motion.
It can't require a variance for something that's not required by the code.
And not being requested.
You know what I'm asking is, if there is a variance going forward?
Just as a clarification, it's not a variance they'd be getting from the zoning board. The way our code is written, any, any outdoor storage in this, it's, um, getting the zoning board's consent.
Right.
So the wording's a little bit different, so it's not a variance, it's actually asking the zoning board's permission. Um, what you could indicate is, uh, uh, or maybe that any future outdoor storage would be subject to revised site plan. Because that could be a judgment call that a future, um, if it's me, I will remember this conversation and I will know, but if it's some.
If it's somebody in five, ten years.
But if it's when I've retired and, uh, or hit the lottery, that, um, you could make that the, that any future changes to outdoor use on the site would require a revised site plan to come back to the planning board.
Got it. A- and Spencer, I like your wording a- as, as submitted, but we are gonna add that.
Continuing to the north.
Continuing to the north, but we, we should put some language around that, how, how far north do you want to go?
I thought you said to the edge of the building or?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with. That's, edge of the building's gonna leave roughly twenty feet open at the corner. How about the length of the existing fence?
Well, no, you can't do that because.
There's only like eighteen inches open today.
Length of the existing fence is all the way, so then you wouldn't have pedestrian access.
Why don't we just, why don't we allow them the discretion to put a gate area in there if they'd like to? Other than that, it has to go to where the existing fence has to go. How's that?
But then you're, then you, oh, would allow.
I'm not so sure I would, if it were me, I would not make that an open area, but that's me.
I s- I think that the reason that people use that entrance is because if you're living in the apartments back there, it doesn't make sense to walk all the way around the.
Yeah, but it, it's not really their concern, is it? I mean.
But it could be our concern.
No, I get it, you put a sidewalk where people walk, you don't try and put it where you think that they should walk. And that's what we're doing, I think we should give them the option, but we want the fence to go as far north as possible.
I don't think that we should, I think that that access is important for the people who live in the apartment building.
Yeah, I'm not saying do away with the access, I say let it be their o- option. I, you wanna put a gate in there?
No, I wanna say within three to five feet of existing fence corner.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That way it allows them a little leeway to whatever makes modularity sense from the fencing standpoint and it gives them a walkway through to get better than what they have today.
Right.
Mr. Reed, how'd you say that?
Um, you want me to say it more eloquently now?
I, I have it, I have it typed here. I have, if the board, uh, doesn't mind, I have extend the fence along the rear lot line, fencing all the way to the north property line, leaving a three-foot portion for pedestrian access is what the board discussed earlier.
Let's say three, can we say three to five feet, that way it gives them a little bit of leeway on.
Absolutely.
Should we, should we specify it as pedestrian access? I don't think we should do that, because technically it's not a sidewalk. It's not, it's, you know what I mean, you know what I'm saying? Don't, I don't want to write that into, into, you know, into perpetu- you know.
That's pretty much what Matt, that's pretty much what Matt said, it's not a sidewalk, it's not an ingress or egress, it's just.
Yeah, it's just, people happen to use it, but.
Right.
Not to split hairs, but I just, I, 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 I.
Oh, it's got nothing to do with it.
Okay.
That's.
So Michelle, how did you capture it?
That's what I said.
I captured extend the fence along the rear lot line all the way to the north property line, leaving a three-foot to five-foot open portion.
Should we leave it at three foot? Because I don't think it should be any wider, I mean, I don't think that we want people to be able to drive, I don't know, five feet's probably not big enough to drive a car through, but I don't know, you could drive a four-wheeler through that or something, I don't know. I mean, we want to restrict it to foot traffic.
I think you're good at three to five, but whatever. I think we're.
Well, approximately three feet.
Micro analyzing this.
Why don't we split the baby at four?
Um, if we have, um, the range, um, would provide enough room for people? If anything besides people was moving through there, that would be a moving violation and IPD would be called.
So I think Ellen introduced a while back the look at seeker.
Sure, I want to talk about the fence.
Okay, let's talk about the fence.
Uh, is everybody here? I, I mean, I'm gonna do this as a count to four thing again, I think it should be a vinyl fence. Looking around the table and seeing what other people think.
Are you talking about the fence in the front again?
Yeah.
The front.
I disagree.
All right.
I disagree.
You're not gonna win that one.
Okay, that's what I, I.
Right.
Thank you.
I understand your point though, especially about the trash.
I mean, there's, they, they.
It's gonna be a maintenance for somebody and, or enforcement for somebody.
Trash swirling, and when we did the, when they did the Aldi, people talked about all the litter and stuff that went into that ravine back there and it's all, people have said that it's increased since, uh, the, the Hudson Plaza, when they don't sweep it, there is stuff everywhere and it's not go- just gonna stay contained there. And if there's gaps between, if there's small gaps, I mean, that's where stuff catches is between the back of these storage containers and this metal fence. I know that I have, I'm sure that they'll keep the property clean, but why leave us in a situation where there's a possibility when we can just not have the op- the, not, not have the opportunity for it to be unsightly?
I think you bring up a good point, but I think the fact that they're adding this landscaping, that they're gonna be keeping that up, that I believe that that would be part of their upkeep, so. I understand the point, but I, I believe we have to trust them.
I'm sorry, this is a.
All I'm saying is, since they're adding all this landscaping, you know they're gonna make an effort to keep this presentable.
And it becomes a property maintenance issue if they don't.
Yeah, so, I mean, it would only look poorly on them if they allow that to, to happen.
I see a lot of pla- plazas that are not kept.
We all know the whole. But this is better than being vacant, so I'm very much in favor. Mary, anything you wanna? Okay, so with that, anything else before we go to Ellen's comments about looking at seeker?
Mr. Chair, if you'd entertain, I'd present a motion regarding seeker on PB one eight one one dash two upon the matter request by Marathon Engineering acting as agent for Wegman Companies for revised site plan approval associated with the changes of use to convert an existing building into a self-storage with site-related improvements on premises two one 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 Hudson Avenue in a C business district, that we declare this an unlisted action with a negative declaration.
Do they have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Cherries? I'm sorry, no abstains, any abstains? Would anyone like to make a motion? I do have two things captured.
I am gonna add one other thing with the six-foot fence going in the back that we limit the, uh, hours on the lights in the back of the building aside from what's needed for safety.
So, say that again, cause the lights are the ones that are existing.
They're, the lights are existing, they're probably not working at all at the moment, I couldn't imagine anybody starting them on. But the fence is going down from six, from almost ten feet.
In some areas, right.
To six feet, which means that those lights are above that fence line at this point and none of them look like they're guarded for spill at all, they're just big floodlights.
So what was the restriction you were trying to, I'm sorry?
That we would, um, I think in this case, since it's twenty-four hours, we're gonna have to put a real timeline on when the lights can be on aside from, or maybe they can make the motion censored back there.
So it's a twenty-four hour facility?
Right. I'm looking for a little help here, I'm not getting anything.
I s- I see what you're saying, but I can't find a way out of it, I like, I can't, you know, and you can't, you really can't motion censor, you know.
Without changing the entire fence.
Yeah, I'm assuming they're, I'm assuming they're, they're, they're the sodium vapor bulbs and not the, you know, not LEDs.
Yeah, they're.
So you're kinda, those are, those, those don't work like that, unfortunately.
Then I guess we're looking at some time elements here, probably ten o'clock at night.
I think it's important to keep it bright back there.
I think that there should be security lighting back there, I don't think we need halogen bulbs burning over into the, uh, neighbor's property.
Is there an entrance back there, I forgot at the moment.
There's one entrance that's attached to a ramp back there, I don't, and then there's, um, some stuff going on around the dock.
And we didn't limit the use of the dock to only daytime or anything?
I, I understand.
I understand this concern.
Where you're coming from, I, I don't know how to quantify it is the problem, because it's a twenty-four hour facility and I don't know how you quantify security lighting, because most likely they're spaced at a distance that provides illumination. So if you turn half of them off, I, I don't know how you can, I understand where you're coming from, I, I don't know how to address it.
Almost makes me want to go back to my like for like, but I won't, I gave that up.
He- here's, here's, here's what I'll say. Um, the lights are at exactly the same height as those air handling units that I brought up on the backside of the building. And so if, you know, if the air handling unit was high enough.
The air handling unit is on the roof.
Yeah, but it's on the lower roof. So if the air handling unit wasn't an issue, or w- if the air handling unit was above the ten-foot fence, so were the lights.
Previously, you're saying?
Previously, prior to this application, so the six-foot fence isn't gonna make any difference.
A good point.
Yeah, I just, I'm not finding a good solution here for myself. I mean, I don't, I think of anybody else, yep, go ahead.
Could I offer, uh, from staff, from our perspective?
The audience could holler, I didn't.
Um, so could the, would the board perhaps entertain, um, to keep the light as is, as presented? Um, in the instance, if we receive any complaints from the, from the neighbor, because that is a subject, there is a potential, uh, code compliance issue, so code enforcement, if they were to be notified of a concern for late night, that administratively, we could, staff could work with the property owner to discuss a limit that would be conducive and, and not impose a, if there is in fact light spill to the neighboring property that's impacting, um, that's something that the neighboring property owner could alert code enforcement to and then we could take remedy at that point.
Is there a way to retrofit those so we can keep the light at their property line?
That I, that I don't know, but I'm, I'm saying if it were to be an issue from a code compliance standpoint, that.
Okay.
I really, I really like that idea.
Okay. So that if it becomes an issue.
I, I don't like, I don't like the idea that we're passing something that we want the neighbors to complain about to get action done.
However, it may not, it may not rise to that level of, if the, we're, if the light spill isn't an issue, then it won't be a, a matter that gets anybody's attention. If it does become an issue, then it could be addressed from a, through a building permit, um, with a, a change out in the light's fixture. And we would ensure at that point the light fixture is a no spill, um, or guarded or shielded in such a way that it won't spill off the property line with a photometric plan.
We are, I mean, we are allowing them to go down to a six-foot fence in some areas.
Right.
So it, I don't think that it would be unreasonable that if that's the choice that the applicant has made and would like to do, that there are other factors that we need to consider because of this change. So if the fence goes down, then maybe we need to consider different light fixtures if the fence stays as it is.
For, for the record, guys, just, just so we know what we're talking about here, they have light poles in that parking lot already that face those residential buildings. And, and light poles in between the fence and the building. I'm looking at a Google Street View right now, the parking lot, they have.
You said the ten-foot fence does not block any.
They have multiple light poles in their parking lot that face into their parking that are just like streetlight light poles to light up their own parking lot.
I'm good, let's move along.
Oh, the, the apartment.
Yes.
All right.
I didn't pay attention to that part.
It's okay. So I'll make the motion.
Bernie, just one, one item, I do have down that signage has to come back. I don't know if we recorded that when you were doing conditions.
No, we did not.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is that building, building mounted as well or just?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can state that that would be coming back.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so.
I have a question, I'm sorry. You said signage had to come back, we can't approve their building mounted signage based on the renderings that they sent in?
They said they were bringing them back, so we didn't get any dimensions.
I was trying to cut them a break.
You can make a proposal if you want.
I mean, I think.
You could staff approve if you.
I think, I think that the signage that they've sent in the rendering for the building mounted signage seems fine and if it's in keeping with what's there, then staff could administratively approve it.
I'd rather see the size of it.
Okay, never mind.
Okay.
Okay. In regards to case number PB one eight one one dash two, property address twenty-one eleven Hudson Avenue, upon the matter of request by Marathon Engineering acting as agent for Wegman's Company for revised site plan approval associated with a change of use to convert the existing building into self-storage with the related improvements on premises twenty-one eleven Hudson Avenue in a C business district with the following conditions slash findings. Any future use for storage in the rear of the building will require a planning board review. Did I say that correctly?
Works for me.
Second one is extend the fence in the rear lot line, leaving a three-foot, approximately three-foot access. Did I get that correct?
We're doing three to five feet?
No, I thought we agreed to approximately three feet.
Approximately, perfect.
Any signage will need to come back to the planning board for approval? That is my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Hold on one second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That passes. Thank you for doing business around quick. You cannot say that we're not detailed. I'm ready when you are, Michelle.
Thank you, thank you for your patience. Next item on the agenda is case number PB one eight one one dash three upon the matter of request by US WBR acting as agent for Duran Senior Apartments LP for signage approval to install freestanding monument signs on premises forty-two twenty-five and forty-two fifty Culver Road in an R five residential district.
Good evening, uh, Jim Vacasi from US WBR in Rochester. And, uh, we're proposing signs you see here that we've discussed, um, one located at forty-two twenty-five Culver Road, the other forty-two fifty. Um, these signs are proposed, both meet the requirements of height setback, um, size requirements that are laid by the town. The sign boards themselves are intended to match the contact of the, context of the existing signs that are located for the Saint Salome Project, um, in terms of font size, font type. Um, supports for the sign are brick piers that are of similar brick material, the same brick material that is used for the facade of the buildings that are currently under construction. Um, one sign is located at the corner of Mokona and Culver, the other is at the opposite corner of, wait, can't remember what it is, it is.
You're gonna want to use the mic.
Cool, it's at the corner of Culver and Dewberry. Um, I think that's it.
I think the board has seen these, if you want to turn them for the camera and the audience. Unless the board needs to see it.
And, and just from a procedural standpoint, I'm just gonna remind the board that we do need to take up each vote for each parcel, uh, separately, if you don't mind, only so we have a clear record.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, quick question, this is for both parcels, signs are, I believe you said not lit during the workshop, correct?
Correct.
They're not lit and the letters are not removable, they're not like, you can't change what they say.
Correct. So I have a procedural question for you. So both of these motions have both addresses, you want them to actually only have one address for each motion?
Um, yeah, you could do one. Um, yeah, you could do one, one motion per address.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? This is a public hearing? This is a public hearing?
This was advertised as a public hearing, yes.
Please have a seat. Like to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to address this from the audience? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Excuse me, Chairman. One other final procedural issue is that the signage applications are a type two under secret and don't require any further analysis.
Chair, would you like some help?
Yes, please.
On.
Please remember you gotta do separate addresses.
Yep. On the matter of PB 1811 dash three, upon the matter of request by S W B R, acting as agent for Duran Senior Apartments LP for signage approval to install freestanding monument signs on premises 4225 Culver Road in an R5 residential district. I move that we adopt it as presented. I'll second.
Second. Was that Mr. Evelyn or Mr. Reed? I'm sorry.
Mr. Evelyn.
You're gonna do the next one.
Yep.
And one more procedural thing. I only have one. So how would you like me to do? Okay, I'll write it as such. I'll write it as two. Okay. All those in favor, you said 4225, just to clarify. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstains? 4225 passes.
Let me know when you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead with the next one, please.
I'd like to make a motion on PB 1811 dash three, upon the matter of request of S W B R, acting as agent for Duran Senior Apartments LP for signage approval to install freestanding monument sign on premise 4250 Culver Road in an R5 residential district that we approve as submitted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that one too.
I have Ms. Albeck. Okay, sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No abstains. That passes also. Thank you.
I'm ready when you are.
Thank you. Uh, the next two items on the agenda is our case number PB 1811 dash four and PB 1811 dash five. I should probably, I'm sorry, I apologize. Let me do, um, four first. Upon the matter of request by let sign and lighting services acting as agent for Aspen Dental for signage approval to install buil- building mounted signage on premises 1238 East Ridge Road in a C business district.
And I think we're gonna call both cases at the same time due to both buildings requiring.
And the next item for the PB 1811 dash five is upon the matter of request by Anchor Sign Incorporated, acting as agent for Well Now Urgent Care for signage approval to install building mountain signage on premises 1238 East Ridge Road in a C business district.
Not me.
Tell us about your project. Tell us who you are and what you're.
Good evening. Kirk Wright, Sign and Lighting Services, 530 Route 104, Ontario, New York. Uh, I'm here for Aspen Dental signage, uh, 1238 East Ridge Road, uh, used to be the existing Breger Bagel. We're looking to install signs on three elevations, the north elevation, the east elevation, and the south elevation of the building. Uh, all signs would be illuminated. Basically, this building fits the Aspen Dental model. Uh, they've been building them across the state. Just looking to identify that half of the building is Aspen Dental.
So I understand the request. So the, I'm gonna request staff assistance here because I believe when we look at the building as a total, there's a, a problem with signage.
Well, that's not much of a problem, just a, for clarification purposes, this is one building located on one parcel with two tenants. So that's it, you have to treat the building as a single building and the limitation in our code says that building mounted signage cannot exceed 350 square feet maximum. So the two items that are side by side on this app, on this agenda, one from Aspen Dental and one from, uh, the urgent care facility. When you add up the, the, the proposed building mounted signage, they exceed the 350 square foot minimum. Individually, each business doesn't exceed it, but you have to count them combined. Unfortunately, when, uh, this is something that's, I don't think staff who is working with the individual, um, applicants realize that they'd be going over. Um, and, and the, the code clarification didn't get shared with the applicant. So as it stands, the, what I'm gonna call the front, meaning the east, the east ridge roadside, um, and the side, which would be east and west respect, respectively, um, those two elevations uh, could, could, um, when you add in the, the rear elevation, meaning the side that's to the north on from bulk, because each tenant has a proposed sign on that backside of the building, um, that is what kicks it over the allowed, uh, limit. So I think from a procedural standpoint, to keep the signage as presented, the, both applicants would need to seek uh, variance. And this is one of those, uh, bit of a challenge, um, in terms of it is the same building and they, each has uh, you know, a lease agreement with the owner of the, of the, the building. Um, so to the extent, to the extent that they have to work out those details of what they would be getting a variance for, one thought would be that the, this board could act on the, the two that would be in compliance when you add them all together. Um, so that meaning the east and west elevations and the, the south elevation, the east ridge road facing. I do have the, I do have the calculations if that, the board needs that information. Um, the other thing, uh, and I don't believe, the other, other factor is the other applicant is out, out of town and was advised, um, that they didn't need to come in to or be here to be present for the sign application. Unfortunately, they were not aware of the, um, the, the overage of, uh, from a zoning perspective. And so for that, also for that reason, the planning board may want to, uh, take up the items they can approve tonight and then uh, keep it open for any future, the, the rear signage potentially.
Or we could table the whole thing until we have the, both applicants here?
Well, the, um, what I would, what I would contend is that the, the, the property is set to open, um, on, so that in order.
Or give the guy that showed up the cake?
Sounds like the other guy needs a variance.
I'm teasing. Um, I do have a question though, if I can, Mr. Chair. Is there, um, signage on the back of the Culver Ridge location?
Culver Ridge?
Uh, for Aspen you're talking about?
On the backside of the Culver Ridge Plaza, because there is an Aspen Dental located there. That's the question. I don't know if this applicant, I can see if I can do a Google search for the image.
The one that's in the plaza, Culver Ridge Plaza?
Right.
I don't know.
I don't know either. That's why I asked a question.
I don't think, I don't think they're facing a firehouse.
Often I do ask questions that I do know the answer to.
That faces the.
But this, this is, this is legitimate one? Uh, Alan, there is not.
That faces a firehouse. There's no road.
No, I, what they're telling me is that corporately, they've got to put the sign on the back. Well, it turns out they don't.
Corporately?
Right?
Where did you hear the, I'm sorry, where did the corporate?
Well, that, I mean, not them individually, but when I read the email that was shared with us from Mr. Cone.
Yeah, I think.
Which was regarding the other application.
Right. The other application. Um, so did you get our feedback from the planning board session or workshop?
I did, and I read something about illumination.
Also the south facing. Did you get that input?
Uh, the only input that I.
North facing, I'm saying.
North facing.
North facing.
Yeah, and that's, that was my understanding. There was concern about illumination to, uh, residential area. And we're willing to put a timer on that to limit the amount of time that that's, uh, that that sign is illuminated.
Are you asking us, just so I'm clear here, are you asking us to consider both of these applications, although they're separate on our agenda, in combination?
Because.
Let me turn my, turn my mic on. Somebody should yell at me. I spent my whole time yelling at everybody else.
The mic Nazi.
So the, yes, so the challenge here is we've got two separate tenants each making application on behalf of the, um, the corporate tenant. And we had a third party who constructed the shell of the facility and the site improvements. That's why the, as part of the shell and site, um, application, the owner of the property came in for the freestanding signage and a couple of months ago. Um, all parties were advised that signage was going to be required and approval by the planning board was needed. Um, unfortunately, it's coming in right now. That's when applications were made. So that's the challenge here. So you've got a, each applicant, and I don't know what their lease agreement is or what the term, what the terms are, would dictate who gets what preference for signage. So that's, that's the challenge here is I don't, I don't know if this board's gonna make a decision for one party versus the other and if that's gonna upset the apple cart. But right now, as presented in combination, total, all total building mounted signage, um, adds up to 433.62 square feet. Uh, code allows up to 350. So, um, by, you couldn't approve all of the signage for both parties. What if you take the front and the side, uh, mounted signage, that would, um, for both parties, that would equal 343 and 50 point, 53, uh, square feet of total building mounted signage, which would be compliant with our zoning.
And then if I allowed them an entrance and exit sign at the Portland entrance and exit, would that count toward that 350?
So a, entrance and exit sign, you mean, do you mean like a incidental signage for like wayfinding?
Like you see at Tops or whatever.
So that's wayfinding and it's, it's incidental and so it's not, that's separate and it's not calculated toward the building mounted. So building mounted is anything that's affixed to the wall or to the exterior of the building. And that's capped at 350 square feet for the total building. No matter how many sides are, are covered and there's no, uh, uh, limit there. I'm gonna double check. So that's the challenge is that we're taking up two applications.
And I was only asking that to offer that as a solution to Mr. Cone's, um, concern to us.
Procedurally, is, and, and this is just spitballing here. I don't think we're gonna change anything to do with the east ridge. The signs on the east ridge frontage of the building. And I'm kinda looking at Carrie here. I don't know what is gonna happen with the east and the west, and I don't know what's gonna happen with the north elevations, but the south elevations, I don't think we're gonna change. Right? Those are kind of the entrance. That's, that's, that's where the branding is, right? Are we, and this is more for you, Carrie, are we able to approve in the interest of the opening of that facility, just those signs? So we can identify which business is which? And table the other ones?
My understanding is that, that is a possibility so that you could make a decision on the portions of the application that would be in compliance with the code limitations, um, and would, and be able to table the balance so that the applicants have an opportunity to um, present. The other thing too is that there, a variance would be needed and we would have to sort out who is, are both parties seeking the variance for the portion of, that goes over. This is a little bit of an unusual situation in that we have one building, two tenants making application. Um, and so that's the challenge here.
I have a question. Um, you said that the amount of sign and square footage that they're allowed is 350 square feet. Is, is that 350 square feet for any building or is it calculated on square footage?
So it's for any building, there are, um, some additional, um, allowances, if you will, if, when it gets to be a plaza that's over a certain size. So this doesn't rise to that level because I think the minimum starting point is a 10,000 foot, square foot structure. And this is under that.
That's how you do a plaza.
So that's typically how they divvy up a plaza so that, um, but this isn't quite a plaza from our code perspective. Um, and it's not, it's not a single occupancy building. Um, and in other past occasions like this, the amount of building mounted signage didn't rise to the level of getting close to the 350 square foot allowance. So it was not a, a non-issue. So I point to you, the Starbucks Chipotle is the same type of arrangement where it was one building divided between two tenants and they each made applications related to their, um, their signage or it was presented at the time of the planning board's approval, but it didn't exceed the code requirements and no variances would have been needed to allow what they were proposing at the time. So it was a non-issue. Here we've got a little bit of a different scenario because a variance would be needed to keep all of the, all of the signage as presented.
I have a question then for you. Are they applying for a variance?
There is no application for a variance. That's, I don't think they, I don't know that they were advised by staff that they were working with at the time that that would be needed. And unfortunately, it was a miss. And I think, um, they were.
Yeah, that's no problem. I just, if it needed a variance, it may be a subject for us to take a look at once they were able to achieve that or not achieve that. But if that's not the issue, then the issue comes back to us. Right, Mr. Chair?
I think it does. And, um, I'd like to give you a chance that if you are able to achieve partial improvement, approval tonight, would that satisfy you or you got concerns there? Cause as Carrie, the staff is trying to put an alternative forward.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I appreciate, uh, that you're trying to work with us and I appreciate that you understand the time restraint here. I'll ask you, did the board have a challenge with the south and the east elevation? Uh, it sounds as though the north elevation is the question.
We had a, we had a challenge with the total number of square feet that this.
That I understand.
So, so once that's proposed, you can divide that number by six.
Partial approval, can I get partial approval, two out of three?
Well, here's, here's, here's the way I see it. This is just a conversation point. There's one of two things we can do. We can approve just the south faces, which theoretically gives them leniency to resubmit the east, west and north elevations to make those all under the total. Or we can approve the north, excuse me, the south, the east and the west, but that leaves them seven square feet open, which essentially means they're not gonna have any signage on the rear of the building.
Right, but I, let's be honest, I think at the workshop, the board was.
I don't disagree, but I think the code reads as such that we can't necessar- I mean, we can limit hours of lighting, we can do all those things, but we can't necessarily deny them signage on the north face. So we would be sort of precluding any signage or they could each have a three and a half square foot sign on the north face if they wanted.
Or, or it could apply for a variance.
Or it could apply for a variance.
Right.
So I, Mr. Wright, do you have any comment on that front?
I have no problem approving theoretically south, east and west. It precludes them from doing anything other than getting a variance, basically.
I think it's in my best interest now if I can get approval for south and east. And then I can get my customer identified for their opening on Monday.
Right.
And we'll.
Deal with the other.
Table the north elevation, so to speak, to, uh, to kind of move everything forward. I'm fine with that.
Well, south and east is the only the.
I can only speak to Aspen Dental.
Understood, understood, right.
Yeah.
They're gonna ride along in the same car because they have.
Oh, yeah. It would be, it would be.
He's just gonna take the cake.
We appreciate you being here tonight.
I do have, um, one concern going on with the building. Those windows are not transparent on probably his side of the building. There's shades on them right now that are blocking the transparency of that building. And I get it, there's signs up saying coming soon, hiring. And those are temporary, so I assume those will come down on Saturday. Is that the opening, I think?
So if, they may be up while the construction is going on. If they were to be, um, in place after it's operational, we would advise them of the code requirement for the 20% transparency. Um, if it's, if they're using it as shade, in other words, it's blocking the sun, but it. Um, if it's, if they're using it as shade, in other words, it's blocking the sun, but it can't be, uh, you can have a shade in the window, it can't be advertising or signage. So you, that's, that would be the distinction there. We would make sure that they were code compliant.
The blocking the sun part is the part that I found more funny.
Well, at benefit of the doubt.
Would it, do we have the ability to just, uh, approve them? So we have to decide between these two, these two tenants, right? They're at odds, right? And how do we decide which one gets a bigger proportion?
Well, we can approve, we can approve, south for both.
Yeah.
East for Aspen, and west for Well Now, and nothing on the north. And that would still be compliant within the three hundred, because that would be three hundred and forty-three and some odd.
Change, yeah.
And then they can either come back with a seven square foot sign.
They can do nothing? Come back with seven square foot signs or?
Or they can go to the zoning board and seek a variance.
I think there's another option. I just have to say, I think you can do the north and the east.
You mean the south? The north is the.
The south and the east, and then, um, you can leave the west and the north for Well Point open, only because I'm reading his note.
Here, here's what, what I would suggest though, is unfortunately, that applicant was from out of town. They didn't have a local representative available. They were willing to fly here for this application, and staff unfortunately said, it's a signage application, that's not necessary, not realizing that this was going to be an issue with the overage. And so it would not be in, I, I think if we're going to allow the approval or the consideration of the approval for the, for the south and east for Aspen, we would afford the same for the other applicant, and advise them of, of the fact that it's still open for the south. But if they want to pursue that, they would need a variance to do so.
Or, or, Mr. Chairman, they could always put their south, Well Now, could put their south facing sign on now for opening. They could not do the west and, but then.
Modify their.
They could come back and modify their application, say they want to make the west smaller, so that they can have more room for the north.
That's what I was proposing as well.
Well, I'm just saying, if we approve.
They don't have to build it. They still need to get a building permit.
Right, they can still, if, if we approve south and west for Well Now.
Oh, then they can put whatever size, I get it.
Sure, they can go smaller and then resubmit and say, hey, we also want to now add a twenty-five.
Then I think it would address, only because he's not here, but he wrote this note stating that should he be here too, so.
And unfortunately, the staff, he responded, at the hour that he responded with that question, um, uh, we were not here to advise, and I did try, I did try calling him, uh, prior to the meeting, just to alert him of this issue, and so in fairness, I, you know, would not want to punish them for not being here. They did offer to be here.
Yeah, the way Spence, I think that gives the option I was looking for.
Yeah, they can always, they can put on just the south if they want, and then resubmit and redo the west and the north, if that's what they choose to do.
Yeah, but I'll be honest, I still have an issue with the north face.
I have an issue with the north too. I mean, I don't.
I, I do too.
I think he's gonna have a tougher time if he comes back wanting to do that. That's why I asked about the, what is it called, Carrie? The operational, the directional signage?
Oh, and we call it incidental, but yeah, so, I mean, I think that, uh.
Because that would address his concern in that email.
Well, we don't technically have to review the signage for it, right? Why can't we just approve up to three hundred and fifty square feet of signage and let them decide what they want to do?
Well, because if it's going to be on the north face, then I want to limit the hours of operation, of lighting, at a minimum.
Yeah.
So I think it gets real fuzzy then, because now we're giving them carte blanche to do what they want.
Are they both opening?
We don't have a chance to.
Are they both opening this weekend? Does staff know?
They're, they're both, uh, according to the radio.
According to the postcard we got at home.
Yes, and they're, I think they're both trying to open as, within the next couple of weeks. Uh, and I know they're working toward, uh, obtaining their certificate of occupancy in short order.
I'm, I'm more than comfortable approving the south and the east and the west facades of the building, signage on the building, and leaving that whole seven square feet. For, for, for them to do what they, if they each want a three and a half square foot sign, if they want to come back and get a variance, if they want to not put up the east and west signs and figure it out.
Go back later, then that's their prerogative.
But I think, I think that, I think that leaves, it leaves them the best option to, to at least identify the building the best they can, and then they can, leaves them as much figuring it out on their end as they want to do, and then they can come back if they so choose.
What, what's, what's the total square footage of, of the, of the south and the east and west?
Altogether? Three hundred and forty-three point five-three.
Which is, what, seven feet under, seven square under?
Six point four, seven feet on.
Why can't you, why can't we incorporate what Brad was telling us with what, what you threw in? And, and that is, uh, we want to know about the back, we, we want to have that stuff here, but, uh, I mean.
Michael, I think that we're more comfortable approving what they proposed that they would like to do on the east and west and the south side, and eliminate the north side, because it would not be in compliance, and we don't have the authority to give them that.
Well, I like that too.
Yeah, so I think that that's where we're at right now.
My fear is that based on what they would theoretically propose on the north side, that side specifically, I want a chance, if they're gonna propose signage there, to specifically review it and discuss the things around it, because to me, the north side makes no sense, because you're really not going to see it from anywhere.
Well, that, that, that's why, that's why I suggested that we reduce, I don't know, I, I want, I want to say, make the, make the signs smaller all the way around, and, and nothing in the back.
Well, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna step out on a limb here and say that if Mr. Wright's planning on installing signs for an opening this weekend, he's got the signs made, and he wants to put them up. So, so I'm guessing he doesn't want to come back and say, I'm going to make all the signs thirty percent smaller, so I can add one on the north. So he's, he's most likely going to come back and ask for a variance on the, the north side to put that sign up, because he's already got the other ones made and wants to put them on the building. I, I understand where you're coming from, I'm just, I know the reality of what you're trying to do, because I've been there with you.
Not for nothing.
You don't want a shop full of Aspenes?
No.
I think, Spence, the way you described it gives the best options, you know.
I don't want us to feel railroaded into having to make this quick decision. I mean, I certainly understand the position that the applicant is in, but we did approve Aspen Dental and, um, the urgent care, quite a while ago. And for the application for signage to come in right ahead of opening.
I, I understand Carrie's explanation of this, and I'd like to help them move along forward, so we're taking care of that. I don't think that ironically is being unfair to them by any stretch of the imagination. I think that we can do what, I think that you're in agreement with what we'd like to do.
I, I am, I just, another one of those things that I just wanted to put out there.
I think it's a valid point, and I don't disagree with you, and I think we've come up with.
Had it come earlier, and the exact same thing had happened, it would have been plenty of time to resolve it.
Which is why now they're going to kind of, I think, get stuck with a reasonable alternative, and they have to come back, or not. They can just say, never mind, we don't want to do the north face, and not ever do it.
Right.
If that's their prerogative.
Fair enough.
Any other comments?
No, but we need to do a public hearing.
Oh, yes, we do. Can you please have a seat? I'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to address 1238 East Ridge Road for Aspen Dental?
Don't even think about it.
Greg's getting out.
No, he's not.
I will close. Could I do these together, or since we called them together? Or are we gonna open separate?
Um, you would need, uh, just a separate motion for each one.
I'll close that public hearing.
So in that.
Oh, you can have the public hearings open and closed to combine. They were called together, so the whole thing is closed. I apologize. I misunderstood the question.
So, so as far as the motion, we need a motion independently, so we won't. I'm sorry, I apologize.
So I didn't call the one for, um, the Well Now Urgent Care. So this would be for both Aspen Dental and Well Now Urgent Care. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board? You're more than welcome if anybody wants to address the board. That's it. Close the public hearing for both of these. Thank you. Now.
Sorry, so my, my question is from a motion standpoint. We're making two motions, correct?
Correct.
And do those motions need to specifically say anything in them with relation to why we're doing what we're doing with the three hundred and fifty square feet? It's a little confusing since they're independent.
Yeah, I would, I would give the basis for your decision.
When, and when you refer to, um, just out of convenience, I don't know if it's more confusing, but they refer to them as sign A and B both.
Oh.
A, B, and C on both applications.
I would be, I would actually refer to the, um, the elevation direction. So I would reference the south elevation, the east or the west, depending on what side of the building you're on, only because that would be the most clear, and each application did the A, B, and C lettering, and there might be some confusion there, so.
We are in luck though, because this is a type two on secret.
It is a type two on secret.
Have you been studying your handbook? I will entertain a motion for 1238 East Ridge Road, Aspen Dental, please.
Mr. Chair, for your pleasure, and those of the board, on PB 1811-4, upon the matter of request by Sign and Lighting Services, acting as agent for Aspen Dental for signing approval to install building mounted signage on premises 1238 E, East Ridge Road in a C business district, I propose that we accept the application as presented with the exception of the north elevation, as it exceeds the total square feet for signage for a single building when considered with PB 11, 1811-5. Is that close enough?
Well said, I would second that.
It's really a finding, correct?
Pardon?
The finding.
That is, the finding is that it would be in excess of the, uh, square feet.
And you referenced the.
He said, he said with exception of the north elevation.
With the exception to the north elevation. Make it as positive sounding as possible. Do the next one.
Who's the second?
I'll second.
So was it, I'm sorry.
Spencer did.
Yeah, oh yeah, you did.
Okay, who would like to do, oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? None absent. So for Aspen Dental, it's clear? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. So 1238 East Ridge Road, Well, Well Now Urgent Care, who would like to do that one?
I'd have you read it right back and just read the exact same wording. Yeah, you want us to read and change it? Just change the name.
Okay.
I think that was well said.
Hopefully I captured it correctly. In regards to 1238 East Ridge Road, Well Now Urgent Care, case number PB 1811-5, upon the matter of request by Anchor Sign Incorporated, acting as agent for Well Now Urgent Care for signage approval to install building mounted signage on premises 1288, I'm sorry, 1238 East Ridge Road in the C business district, with the exception of the north elevation, which will exceed the square foot allowed. Is that how you said it? Did you catch that differently, Michelle?
When combined with PB 1811-4.
I forgot part of it.
Or in consideration of, probably is a better way to say that.
Which way do you want?
In consideration of.
Say it again, Ellen.
In consideration would exceed the allowable sign square footage in consideration of PB 1811-4.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? That one passes also. Michelle, that one, both of them are type two. I don't know if you need that for the record.
The next item is an item for, uh, board action. It's a tabled item, case number PB 1810-2. Upon the matter of request by William M. Price, acting as agent for Sequay Realty LLC for revised site plan approval for the redevelopment of an ancillary parking lot with site-related improvements on premises 250 Empire Boulevard and tax ID 107.07-2-77 in an R1 residential district.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion on PB 1810-2 that we lift it from the table?
Moved.
I don't think we need a vote on that, do we?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor?
I'll second.
Aye. No opposed, no abstains.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Bill Price. I'm a landscape architect with SWBR, and I reside at 305 Sylvan Road, Rochester 14618. Uh, this application has been before you a few times, uh, most recently at your workshop last week, where we reviewed, uh, some additional information that had been, uh, submitted to you regarding the dumpster location, the wall materials, uh, the lighting, and I think a few more, uh, details on the site drainage that had changed as a result of some information, uh, where we found out the storm sewer is actually running through the site and not the sanitary sewer. So we were able to, uh, modify the storm drainage, so that the footprint of the infiltration basin is a little bit smaller. The retention is under the parking lot, uh, in, uh, chambers, and as, uh, as needed, the, the water will be discharged into the existing sewer system. Uh, you did ask us to provide additional information on the lighting, uh, with foot candles, uh, plots out to the property line that was, uh, submitted, and I, I trust that you did receive that information.
No.
The updated staff have that.
Staff have it?
I'm sorry, the updated draw, what was the?
We, we resubmitted last week, the foot candle plots out to the, out to the property line.
Hang on one, hold on one moment. Oh, goodness in heaven. Oh, we did get it. Came on number 24. Forgive me, it came right, it came before the holiday. Um, I do apologize. I can, we can run up and print them out really quick.
Thanks. Thank you. Meantime, is there any other questions for the, or, I'm sorry, you still have more?
No, no, I.
Oh, okay. We'll take a five-minute break.
Do you want to take a five-minute break?
Please, I apologize for this.
No, that'll give Carrie an opportunity. That'll give Carrie an opportunity.